Okay, I'd like to welcome you to the Committee of the Whole meeting. And for our staff. I like this. For the audience, which is strictly our staff. So, staff remain quiet, refrain from speaking, cheering, booing, or rude or obnoxious behavior. Please turn off or silence our electronic devices. Council members, make sure those are turned down. And Madam Clerk, could we have a roll call? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm announced at this meeting? Oh, no, roll call for it. Go ahead.
Councilmember Mellon is absent. Councilmember Tibbs. Councilmember Bench. Mayor Pro Tem Clock. Councilmember Moore. Councilmember Bryant. Councilmember Bowles. Councilmember Humphreys is absent. Mayor Browning.
Here.
We have seven members present, two absent.
Okay. And the purpose of today's Committee of the Whole is to continue our exciting fiscal year 2018-19 proposed budget overview. And at this time, Mr. Morales, what kind of wonderful thing you've got for us today?
As you said, we're continuing the presentations with the exciting enterprise funds, internal service funds, and fiduciary funds. So with that, I will hand the podium over to Ms. Yolanda Jones and her staff.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Pro Tem, councilmembers, City Manager Morales. As the City Manager stated, today we will be going over the enterprise funds. You'll hear from myself, Ms. Kimberly Mason, and Mr. Phil Carwatt on the water and sewer funds. Mr. Weiss will be discussing the internal service funds and fiduciary funds. And we will complete the budget presentation with Ms. Beth Church presenting on personnel complement. It should be noted that the web or the budget document is on the website at www-saganal, or actually at saganal-mi.com. And it can be viewed in the City Clerk's office. So what is the enterprise fund? Enterprise funds account for services provided to the general public by way of user charges. For fiscal year 19, the enterprise represents roughly 48 percent of the total citywide budget. The total budget for the fund type equates to $56.94 million and represents roughly two-thirds of the general, non-general fund spending. There are three funds that consist of the enterprise funds. You have the boat launch, sewer, and water operation and maintenance funds. This can be found on pages 252 to 288. Starting on page 252 to 254, the boat launch fund. The boat launch fund will represent $38,021, and this is an increase of $150. And basically, you're seeing a slight increase in parts and supplies. So without further ado, I'm going to bring Ms. Kimberly Mason up to present or start presenting on the sewer operation and maintenance fund as well as the water operation and maintenance fund. That's found on pages 233, starting now.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Pro Tem, City Council, City Manager. We're going to start with the sewer operation and maintenance fund, which is fund number 590. Can be found on pages 233 through 271. Fiscal year 19's budget is $23,803,200, which is an increase of $922,480, which is a 4% increase. And these increases are primarily due to rising retiree health care costs, indirect costs across the board, contractual increases, and then some capital outlay projects, but actually the capital outlay is lower this year, so primarily it's due to those other reasons. The sewer operation and maintenance fund is split, the areas of responsibility between myself and Mr. Phil Carwatt. Public Services has the engineering administration budget, which is there for the work that the engineering office does for the sewer fund. Meter maintenance and service, that's the meter shop, so those are the ones that primarily take care of the meters, the water meters, because sewer, we don't have meters, so we calculate the rates based upon how much water that they use. Maintenance and service, which is the crew that takes care of the collection system that collects the sewage before it goes to the wastewater treatment plant or the retention treatment basins. Catch basin cleaning. Catch basin cleaning is street sweeping. So that's actually done in streets. And we pay parts of the salaries for some of the heavy equipment operators to perform that service for us. And then debt service. And then the areas in my department, I take care of the water administration, which is just the general administration of Phil, myself, our administrative support. And then in that fund, the reason why that number is so high is because some of the, like the retiree health care and indirect costs are all put into that fund versus distributed throughout the fund, so that's why that number's so high. Process control systems, which is the division that takes care of the SCADA equipment at both of the treatment plants, both water and sewer treatment and pumping, which is the division that's responsible for actual treatment of the wastewater. Asset management, this is a new division. Over the course of the last year and a half to two years, we've been working on state mandated asset management plans for both water and sewer. And throughout this process, we've discovered that with the number of assets that we have in both of these funds, that this will require an ongoing process. And so we've taken current staff that were working primarily on asset management and formed a division specifically for that. So we did not, well, there's one GIS technician that was added. But the other two employees, other four employees were already employees within the city. Remote facilities, which are the retention treatment basins. Surplus. Surplus is the division where we put our large capital projects for the sewer fund. And then sewer bond and construction is where we would budget if we were planning to borrow money for sewage, sewer capital projects. There are other divisions within water and sewer, both, but those divisions are handled by fiscal services, customer accounting. So, in the sewer fund, some of our major vehicle and large equipment purchases, the total this year is 612,550. We're purchasing two new street sweepers, a four-wheel-drive utility vehicle, a seven-yard dump truck, and a 10-yard tandem axle truck, a pickup truck for maintenance and service, and then one vehicle for traffic engineering. Traffic engineering does the barricading and setup for all of the work that water and sewer does when they're out in the street. Some of the major projects and purchases for sewer, parking lot improvements, we're finishing, we're doing the second phase of the parking lot improvement over at Maintenance and Service. With all of the heavy equipment that goes in and out of there, that entire property, all of it is really gone back to gravel. And so we're doing various sections. It'll take us three to four years really to get it all done, because we have to be able to maintain access to get in and out, get all of the large equipment in and out for them to be able to do their daily work, so we're doing sections at a time. And we have to build it up to a pretty good standard because of how heavy that equipment is that's going in and out of there every day. Sewer-related road projects, 200,000 in sewer. Beth London did a presentation a few council meetings ago, and these are the projects that had sewer funds tied to them when she did that presentation. So those projects could include catch basin replacements, catch basin leads, manholes, sanitary leads. It'll vary by project. Other major projects and purchases, wastewater treatment plant, Substation 1 and starters for the sewage pumps. The motor starters for the raw sewage pumps are original to the plant construction, so now, this current fiscal year, we've been looking at design for replacing those motor starters, looking to see if we might want to add VFDs and upgrading the switchgear. So we plan to do the first part of that project in the next fiscal year. SCADA system, our PLCs for our SCADA system, the programmable logic controllers are now outdated. We will no longer be able to get repair parts for those, so we're going to take the ones that are related, that are tied to the most critical equipment and replace those first, and then those will be spares for some of the other ones throughout the system that are less critical until we complete the project. And we're looking to take two to three years to finish this project. We'll do it in phases. And then there are some other miscellaneous projects, which are usually like, are regular changing out certain valves, certain flow meters, roofing upgrades, things of that nature, that are just general maintenance to the facilities that we budget for on an annual basis. We have quite a few buildings and facilities, so we space it out and we try to do so much of it every year. Okay. I'm going to go over to the water operation, so the maintenance fund, which is fund number 591, which can be found on pages 272 to 288 in the budget document. Okay. In the water fund, the fiscal year 1819 proposed budget is $33,988,500. That's a 4.3% decrease, and that's primarily due to the Davis Road project, which was a large project that we bonded for in the previous fiscal year. We're done with actually putting the new pipe in the ground. All the connections have been made. Everything's, we're running water through the new pipe that we laid, and the only thing that's left to be done in the next fiscal year on that project is to decommission the old mains, because we can't leave them in the ground. So we're going to do that in conjunction with the road project to have those abandoned mains taken out of the ground. Okay. Once again, the areas of responsibilities are split between both public services and water and wastewater services, and it pretty much follows the same lines except for we add the raw water costs. And on the water side, which is what we pay the Saginaw Midland Municipal Water Supply Corporation, because even though the city owns 53%, it's set up as a separate entity, so we have to pay for that raw water cost. And then we have the water bond fund. We do plan to issue bonds in the next fiscal year, and it comes up to a total of $9.1 million. Yes?
Cross connections, personal homes, I mean, because that could get back in our system.
Yes. Well, it's, we have various degrees. We have high hazard and low hazard. If you have a water, an irrigation system at your home, you're required to have annual cross connection inspections, or either have your plumber certify that they've done the inspection and that your backflow prevention devices are working. If you do not, we have an inspector that keeps track of that, and if we don't get anything from your plumber by a certain time, then we give you a letter saying, hey, we need to come in and inspect, and then it goes up until the point where we might actually threaten to say, hey, we're going to have to turn your water off, because this is a hazard to our system. Some of the major projects and purchases, like I said, the decommissioning of the transmission mains along Davis Road. It says in advance of the county, but we're really going to be working in conjunction with them to get that, get those out of there. And then we have the lead and galvanized service line replacement. We applied for a grant that became available at the last council meeting. Council passed a resolution authorizing that grant agreement, which did not require any matching funds. That will allow us to replace lead and galvanized service lines on private property. So we'll be able to go all the way into the home and replace those for citizens. We're thinking that we'll be able to get probably about 300, because we also have money in that line item set aside for getting an accurate inventory. A lot of these lines, what was on the private side wasn't noted, so it's not in the record, and we're being required in the next lead and copper rule by the, that the state plans to issue sometime this year to have that inventory be verified, which means that we're going to have to go to every single home and verify what's at the curb stop and what's coming into the house, which is going to be a huge undertaking. And so right now, the only way we can do that is we're using our sewer vac truck, one of them, because then we can irrigate to get down to the curb stop, see the materials on both sides, and then go into home and do, and look at what's coming inside. If we want, that's, that truck is too large, and we need it to be out in the system doing maintenance on the sewer system versus using it to do this inventory for the water. So we're going to have to purchase a vehicle, which is another sewer vac truck, a smaller one, which is about $300,000. And then also, we're looking at doing, getting some tablets and some other technical upgrades to help with the mapping that's going to be required as well. So it's not all being dedicated to service line replacement, but it's the whole program to get the inventory and everything else together that we're looking, looking at, that we need to have in place within a certain time period based upon whenever this law promulgates.
Do you put all the main researches or?
Well, we have, we have, and we can look at age of the home can give us a good indication of what might be lead. We know what's lead on our side, and so then we need to figure out what's lead, if there's lead or galvanized on the other side.
Once you have records that they've had their service lines replaced, and you can eliminate all of those from having to do.
Yes.
Okay.
We can look at those permits that were pulled when people were doing that type of work.
But that would be your first step.
Yes.
To narrow down, and there should be a fair number of those over the years, I would think.
Well, I don't know. There's still a lot of galvanized.
Oh, no, I understand. But I mean, even if you eliminate 10%,
Yes.
That's still a significant number.
So, and then, and we got, what, about 18,000 of them. We estimate between 11,000 and 12,000 out there are lead or galvanized on the private side. So, and then with the problem with galvanized is that if we have a leak and we take the pressure off the line, the galvanized tends to collapse. So if you, and doing partial replacements is really not the way to go, because now you're disturbing everything that's in that pipe. So. Okay. And then we have, we're looking at putting in a parallel main on Junction Road to provide some redundancy out towards the Frankenmuth area and Bertrand area for when we've had issues with our water main on Dixie Highway, and we have to be able to loop. It'll help us loop the system so that we can continue to provide water to various customers if we have to take the Dixie Road main down for a repair or maintenance.
Are you going to do that in conjunction with the? Dixie Highway repairs that are going on, that have just been announced?
Um, no.
Can't you do that?
Well, this is going to be, not be on Dixie. This is going to be to the, want to talk about that?
No, you got it. Yeah, no, we, this, well, this has been brought up several times. Every year, every third year, we have to have a sanitary survey done by the DEQ, which tells you the improvements you need to make in your system in order to stay compliant with the DEQ rules. So one of them was getting a redundant line or a parallel feed to get to the communities out towards Frankenmuth and Bertrand, because we've had a high break history on that. And a while back, we were contacted by the Road Commission, because they are going to do a job, and we've already done some work in advance of that. We went in, I think it was a couple weeks ago, and we just installed some valves, so we're able to do some bypasses in advance of their project that will allow us to tie onto this system, and we're going to be outside of the roadway. We're looking at going in the right of way, but outside of the roadway, and getting, going a different route than Dixie Highway, because when something happens out there, there's a lot of traffic. So we're looking at some of them, other country roads that, you know, go a different way. It'll keep our costs down and keep us outside of the actual physical road, so. Okay. Thank you.
And then Miller Road in the city, we have a 36-inch water main that needs to be lined. Vehicle and large equipment purchases are really just the same ones that we had in sewer. We split most of our purchases 50/50, because the same crews, the same division that does the collection system also does the transmission and distribution system. And then the water-related road projects, you're going to see some of the same roads, because once again, Beth, when she did her presentation, now you're looking at the water improvements, water system improvements that will be done in conjunction with those road projects as well. Okay. And then at the water treatment plant, we're looking at a variable flow study. Our flow out of the treatment plant has dropped significantly over the last 10 to 15 years. And so we're looking at putting in a smaller pump with a VFD, because it gets very hard, especially on the midnight shift when there's hardly any usage, to be able to keep a small enough pump online and have a backup pump as well. We like to try to run two pumps, because we have two lines coming in from consumers' energy. So that if we lost power on one line, we'd have power on the other one, and we wouldn't lose pressure. So it's become very difficult to have one, even our smallest pump on. What we're doing is we're cranking, we're closing off the discharge valves, which is causing damage to those valves, because that's how we're regulating the flow. Versus if we had a variable speed, a variable frequency drive, we could open those valves up 100%, and we could change the speed that the motor is operating at, which would save us quite a bit on maintenance costs. And it should also help us with electrical costs. Sure.
So, from what I'm hearing, the enterprise is what we're doing.
Roads.
With the roads.
Mm-hmm.
So that gives us some savings across the board, because we like doing a double heater at one time.
Right.
Versus doing one, one time coming back. Okay.
Yeah, because if we can afford it, the best thing for us to do is to take care of those underground utilities when they're doing road work, because we hate to put in a new road, and then we got to go back in and dig it up, because now we got to go and deal with the 100-year-old water main now that needs to be fixed. It's going to be tough. I mean, we have a lot of old water mains in the city and sewer mains, and so as much as possible, we're trying to coordinate these projects so that we're not having to go back and dig up a new road. And then we're looking at Lake Linton, some improvements to Lake Linton, which is the small reservoir that's outside the treatment plant. We want to, and this is a project we don't know if we'll be able to get to this year, but we need to be able to go in and just dredge it and get some of the growth of some of the, 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 um, some of the weeds and things that are growing up and the silt that's building up in it. It's become harder and harder to keep that water as fresh as the Lake Huron water that we bring in, and so when we run it, it actually increased our treatment costs, because we have to really add more carbon, add more chlorine, so that we don't have taste and odor problems when we're running it. So we're going to need to do something with that. But we have very limited storage right at the treatment plant, so we just put out an RFP and got the, got two proposals back to look at treatment optimization, which includes that Lake Linton issue and other issues because of the changes in regulation. We want to look at ahead, you know, with this lead and copper rule that's coming, corrosion control. If, right now, we've been able to stay below the action level, but if they lowered the action level, would we still be able to stay below with the way, our current treatment methods? So we want to take a look at that, and we also want to look at the lake, you know, the lakes have changed. The, the temperature is higher in the Great Lakes. They have a lot more runoff, because we tend to have a lot of, they're at really high levels. We've had a lot of precipitation, and so you've had a lot of runoff, which means that the organic content is higher from the runoff that's coming from the surface and running into the, the lake. And when you get higher organics, it makes that water a little bit more difficult to treat, and so there's been an increase in pressure. You've seen the issues with the PFOS and disinfection byproducts. You've probably heard of total trihalomethanes. There've been articles in the paper about that. And what happens is, is we treat for zebra mussels, which have been a big problem in the Great Lakes, with chlorine at our intake. And chlorine with organic matter makes disinfection byproducts. So our intake, it takes three days for the water to get to Saginaw. So the longer that they're mixing together, the higher those disinfection products you're going to produce. And so we're going to take a look at, maybe we shouldn't feed chlorine at the intake. Maybe we should do something different, so then we could bring down those numbers. Like I said, we've been able to stay below those numbers for the most part, but we're getting close, and so we need to take a different look at this. Any questions? Yes?
People outside of the city pay less for their water than people in the city.
Well, the people outside of the city are paying just for their drinking water. If you look at your drinking water bill, when you compare your bill to the people inside the city, if you're looking at the drinking water, we actually pay a lot less for our drinking water rates. The higher cost was primarily related to our retention treatment basins. That debt service has come down, but the cost of everything else has gone up. So while we've, we've lived through 20 years of paying this back, but over the course of that 20 years, we delayed doing other capital projects to our water system to try to keep the water rates very low, to try to balance out how high the sewer rates were. And so some of those communities may not have those costs that were associated with retention treatment basins, because they weren't in the city and they didn't have to deal with the regulations that we had from our large system and the large amount of stormwater runoff that we had. And they had separated storm waters. A lot of them may have had a separated stormwater system, so when it rained, they weren't getting all, they weren't getting, they didn't have to build the retention basins basically to deal with stormwater.
Don't, all the municipalities in the area, don't they buy water at a certain rate from us, from the fund, from the enterprise?
Yeah, they account for about 70% of our revenue, actually.
Okay. Do you ever foresee that the rates get the same, or we pay a little less in the city? Well, how can we make that happen?
I don't think you can do, it's not an accurate comparison to try to compare the two, because their systems are much smaller, they're newer, you know, they don't have 100-year-old water main, most of those communities. And like I-
The city residents that's getting a lot of water and the distribution system.
Right.
So our distribution system, like Kim said, is 100 years old or more, so we have a lot of crews to take care of that. A lot of the other units that buy the water from us have small systems, they have limited staffing, they don't have OPEB costs, so all that goes into our rates that the city residents pay. So as long as we have this system with, Kim can, Phil can probably tell you how many miles of piping we have, but it's going to be more than the other unit systems.
Yes.
But is not our deal so high because of the? Because they're ready to serve beer. Because that ready to serve bill, I mean, most of us starting off at forty-five dollars before we even talk about a bill.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, when I look at my water usage versus what I'm paying for ready to serve, and I know it's across the board, I'm like, family of one, and I'm still paying sixty. And if it gets higher than sixty, I'm gonna scream. But, you know, when I look at what I'm using for water, I'm okay there. But I look at the ready to serve and I'm still trying to figure out what ready to serve is.
Usually the ready to serve fee is there to cover capital because what happens is that our system is set up that we get more money in based upon how much water we're selling. So on a, if it's a hot, dry summer, we bring in more revenue. But if it's a cold, wet summer, we bring in a lot less. And if you want to be able to borrow money, you can't have revenue that fluctuates like that. So you tend to put more of that money into the ready to serve so that you have more of a flat revenue coming in so that you can borrow the money. Because the people who are gonna loan you the money, they want to make sure that you can make those bond payments.
I got one more question. Where did you say Lake Linton was? Is that, is that-
The one between, well, there's two Lake Lintons. There used to be one when there was no Ezra Rush Street. There was all one lake. And now there's two Lake Lintons. You got the one behind the Teahouse that's still connected to the river. And then you got the one that's between the water treatment plant and Anderson Enrichment Center.
Okay.
Which is really Lake Huron water that we're storing. And that's why you see the difference in the color. One is river water and one is Lake Huron water that we're storing.
Okay, thank you.
So this is how I understood it and was explained it to residents where they asked, well, why is our bill more expensive than outside of the city? And it was, from my understanding, it was largely due to the federal mandate, as you said, twenty years ago, which required us to do these upgrades, but it wasn't funded. And so we had to pass the cost on to our residents with this fee. And so that fee was recently paid off?
It's not completely paid off.
Okay.
We still have over, when I showed you the debt service, we still got over two and a half million dollars a year in debt service.
But it's gonna be soon, all right?
Um, yeah, it's, it's getting close.
And I think when, I think I asked this during your last presentation, was that, so I just, I explained it to residents is that they won't see any reduction in the increase once that go away, the debt reduction payment go away. This is because, can I tell them that it's because of the OPEB costs and the new bond issue primarily? And general service, recent service costs? But I guess my question is the OPEB and the new bond issue, is that primarily why they won't see a difference?
Yes, those outstanding liabilities are out there. And then, as I, as I said, when we put a hundred and twenty billion dollars into those bill, into those structures, we did not do other capital. So now we have an asset management plan that says that you needs to do, that you need to do all this other capital. And so with all of the other capital that needs to get done, you, that's where the money's gonna go.
All right, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
For lead and copper, and I mean, I think you can be pretty assured that that's gonna add cost to the bill too for the way that the, the regulations are being put into place with the replacement of the lines that, that Kim mentioned. She mentioned the grant that we got, but if you look at twelve thousand lines- that grant's not gonna cover it.
Potentially, it, it, it just, I mean, the system needs to be taken care of. And this sixty million could have been put somewhere else. Like I said, we've, we've held off on other capital improvements, especially on the water side because the sewer side was so high. And as, as we gear up to try to do that, we get hit with this. That bill is still out in the legislative process right now. And actually, the end of last week, got a look at some of the other changes. They, and it is a little bit better than it was from the memo that I sent you guys, but it's still not good for us. You know, they're, they're talking about now that if you identify in your asset management plan that you may, may be able to take it out further than twenty years, which would be great for us because then we could spread those costs out a little bit further. So I said it's better, but it's still not great. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, City Council members, City Manager Morales. I'm gonna be wrapping up the budget document today by going over the Internal Service Funds and the fiduciary funds, starting with the Internal Service Funds, which account for goods and services provided to one department by another, usually on a cost reimbursement basis. As you can see on this graph, Internal Service Funds make up a little more than six percent of the total citywide budget. And Internal Service Funds can be found beginning on page two eighty-nine through three twenty-two. And this table shows a breakdown of each Internal Service Fund within the city. And as you can see, the total amount for these Internal Service Funds for this year is around seven point five million dollars or a three hundred and forty-five thousand dollar increase from the previous year. Going into a little more detail, we begin with the Public Works Building Fund on two eighty-nine. And this fund's expenditures are used to maintain the building for the divisions and departments that utilize it. And the sole source of revenue for this fund is fees for services or rent that is charged to the divisions that occupy the space within the building. The budget for this year is five hundred and fifty-three thousand nine hundred and seventy-nine dollars. And this is an increase of about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. And that is due to increased motor pool costs and capital outlay projects this year, including renovating the women's restroom in the basement, replacing three overhead doors in the garage and upgrading the building's fire suppression system. Next up is the Department of Technical Services. And there are two funds that are a part of this department. The first one is Geographical Information Systems or GIS. And then you have the Information Services or IS Fund as well. And we'll begin with the GIS Fund, which begins on page two ninety-four. And the budget for this fund is four hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars. And most of this is from charges for services to other departments within the city for goods and services rendered. And within this fund itself, there are two separate divisions, the GIS Division and the Call Center. The GIS Division will decrease by about a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars this year due to the reclassification of a GIS Specialist to the Asset Management Coordinator for Sewer and Water, which reallocates that position's pay to the water and sewer funds. And for the Call Center, we see a decrease of about fifteen hundred dollars from last year. Next up is the IS Fund, beginning on page three hundred. And once again, the IS Fund generates most of its revenue through charges for services. All city departments and divisions pay for the maintenance and support for all of their computers, phones, printers, so on. And revenues for this fund will be about one point four million dollars this year. And this represents a decrease of about twenty-one thousand. There's a decrease in capital purchases of about a hundred and fifty thousand this year because in fiscal year twenty eighteen, a generator was purchased for City Hall. And that project will be complete by the end of the current fiscal year. And that reduction is offset by an increase in salary and benefit costs and the additional, purchase of additional computer software. Sure.
You got two thousand dollars, it says sell or junk. What is the junk?
Thought that was derogatory, it's not junk.
It's the, the sale of old cell phones and old equipment that we can get some revenue back for. You're welcome. Next up is the Radio Operations Fund. And this generates revenues through fees charged to user departments for maintaining and replacing the radios. And the total for this fund is about a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars or a twenty-three thousand dollar increase, primarily due to the increase in the cost of maintaining the city's radios as well as purchasing new radios. The Motor Pool Operation Fund accounts for the acquisition and maintenance of vehicles and other motorized equipment, with the only exception being the Fire Department, which requires specialized service for their vehicles. And the total budget is about two point four million dollars this year, or an increase of about three hundred thousand dollars. This increase is based on historical trends and actual costs to operate the division. In addition, personal services will increase by fifty-eight thousand dollars due to the addition of a fleet maintenance technician. And this addition is directly offset by a reduction of thirty-one thousand dollars in employment agency fees. Operating expenses increase by two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which is associated with increases to the motor vehicle supplies and motor vehicle repairs accounts to bring them in line with actual historical costs. Other increases to point out are the requested capital purchases of tire changing and repair equipment, the replacement of an overhead hoist, the replacement of a vehicle scanner, and the installation of five fluid and air dispensing hose reels. Next is the Self Insurance Fund. And this fund accounts for the payment of insurance premiums, the distribution of insurance costs to other city funds, and records the insurance claims liability. The budget is about one point two million dollars this year, which is an increase of about forty-eight hundred. And this is due to increased information management charges and indirect cost allocation, along with a partial reallocation of the Deputy City Clerk to this fund. The Workers' Compensation Fund revenues are based on a percentage of gross wages for all full-time employees. The city utilizes a median of industrial rates to determine the percentage to assess each employee job classification. And Saginaw Banderator assists with the determination of those rates. Revenues for this fund are about one point three million dollars, with the Workers' Comp Administration Division being a little over a million and Employee Health Services being two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the total. Sure.
We do, it is a purchase, and what's our deductible on that? Do we have a deductible? It is self insured?
Yeah, it is self insured.
Okay. Do we have an administrator outside the city that handles the actual?
Yeah.
All right. And they do all the medical checks, the yearly reviews and so on? All right, thank you.
And finally, are the fiduciary funds? And these funds account for the administration of property or assets that are owned by other entities besides the city. And as you can see, this is a very small portion of our budget, making up only zero point zero three percent of the total budget. And the total for the fiduciary funds is projected to be thirty-four thousand nine hundred and ten dollars. And that's a decrease of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars due to what was mentioned last week, that the unfunded liabilities fund will no longer be a fiduciary fund and instead become a special revenue fund. And the Cemetery Endowment Funds, they account for legally restricted resources. And revenues are collected in these funds. And those revenues may only be used for cemetery care purposes in support of the city's program. Twenty-five percent of cemetery revenues collected in the general fund are split and recognized here. And this is in accordance with the city charter. And the endowment funds are projected to stay the same in fiscal year twenty nineteen.
Getting some more money out of the endowment, or are we still just going on the interest?
Can't take any principal funds from the endowment.
That two hundred, that's gonna stay up, up and up, and all we can do is the interest.
Correct.
That's based on state law as well, when you set up a cemetery trust like that.
You should've knew I was gonna ask that question. Okay.
And at this point, I'd like to invite up Beth Church to do the, oh, I'm sorry.
Well, I had a, you know, I apologize that it's been busy, so I wasn't able to send an email. I guess under Internal Service Fund, the Public Works, World's Motor Pool Operations, there was a discussion about, I don't know, guess revisiting our bulk trash pickup. Is that service under one of those two funds? No? Okay. Yes, sir. Rubbish fund? Okay. All right, I guess I missed, missed out on that. I'll, I'll submit my question, let you know that. Thank you, sir.
I notice the city, we losing people in the city, but we buying more equipment and we putting up more buildings. I'm trying to see how we can justify that. I mean, do, do the tractors getting bigger, the trucks getting bigger, so we need to have more garages? I'm, I'm just curious. I'm, I'm, you may not be able to answer that question, maybe that can go to Phil or something like that.
We're kind of required to start replacing some of our capital equipment and vehicles. I believe when I started back in oh-six, we weren't replacing anything until City Manager Morales came on board, that we started replacing capital, especially vehicles. So it's kind of like we're at the point where either you're spending money for a new purchase or you're spending money for maintenance for something that may not work long-term.
I know, I give many presentations on the fleet. Pretty much anytime we buy something of substantial cost or something, I kind of explain. But I believe when I took over as the Director, seven or eight years ago, the average age of our fleet was like eighteen or nineteen years old, which is unheard of. I mean, and I don't have the overall cost of, the total fleet replacement for the city is like in the multiple millions. We have a fleet of over three hundred and fifty vehicles and equipment, but to continue to provide the services for snow plowing. The other thing is, is that when you get stuff that that's, that's that old, you can't, you're starting to get to where you can't find replacement parts or else the repairs of that starts to get too costly. And we don't have multiple vehicles, like maybe back when we had so many employees, you know, thirty or forty plow trucks. If something went down, you could still provide that service. We have twelve plow trucks, that's just in that division. So when something goes down, it now affects the ability of you to provide that service. So we're just trying to get that average age of the fleet down. I mean, through all of the purchases in the last several years, I think we've gotten it down as low as twelve or eleven years, but it's creeping back up again. So we should be turning it over a lot quicker because then that would keep all your costs down, your, your motor, your motor repair costs and everything else. So that's, that's on the cost of things. And then the reason for needing to add an additional structure at maintenance and service, one of the reasons is we just never really had enough space to house the equipment we had. But three or four years ago, or a couple of years ago, I think everybody can remember where we added some staff. We were looking at contracting out some services. The problem we're having with all the, the sewer extensions and water extension and all the work going on in the road, we're excavating probably over a thousand excavations a year, but we were only maybe doing two to three hundred repairs a year. So every year, we were adding five, six, seven hundred more patches in the street and we were getting behind the gun. So we made it our, our will to catch back up on them patches. So we added some more crews. And that's what was kind of talked about today is there's a little bit more staff needing so that we can set the barricades up and, you know, catch up on our work. So that's the need for some additional equipment, if you're seeing some. And then, then that's the need to add some more storage space to keep that equipment indoors from- from deteriorating greater. And some of that stuff's expensive, so we don't want it outside.
Besides this call for your car wash?
I appreciate that.
Industry standard or municipality comparison, when you talked about the age of the fleet?
Yeah, I mean, I tell you, we've been doing a lot of research. Several years ago, we had a study done. I continued to research. I'm a member of many organizations that I get, you know, emails and I try to look at all that. But communities with money, it's different. I mean, a lot of these older age cities like ours, I mean, you know, what we do is we used to, you know, if you can, you know, the divisions with money used to probably replace them on a, on a quicker scale. You know, really, you'd like to get these things, you know, never older than probably five to seven years at most, and then get rid of them when they still have a salvageable value, then you can put that money back into the replacement of it. But depends on what you're buying, like a sewer vac truck half a million, I mean, if you can get seven to 10 years out of that, that's, that's perfect. I'd like to sell it at that point, but we're keeping them 15, 20 years because they're half a million dollars each, you know. But so, depends on the community, but older cities like Saginaw, I think, are dealing with the same issues, you know, Pontiac, Flint, Detroit, you know. And then what happens is, is the areas that we can tend to find money, water, sewer, streets, we buy, replace that. But then years back, what used to happen, when we, if we had money, we wrote, changed something over at five to seven years, and then moved that down to the other divisions, like a general fund division, to be used for facilities. And then what they would do, instead of having to buy a brand-new vehicle at 40 grand, they would pay them the replacement value of that vehicle at that time back into that fund. But now we're moving vehicles with 20 to 25 years use on them now, you can't do it. I mean, it's, so it's, it's just kind of all caught up to where, you know, stuffs and motors are blowing, transmissions are going, and I mean, it's, you know, four, five, $6,000 to try to fix a vehicle that you couldn't sell for 1,500, it just doesn't make any sense, so.
About five years ago, I remember you, I think it was you provided council with a list showing the age of these vehicles and how much beyond their useful life they were. Has that been kept up so we could see that now? I mean, that might answer a lot of these questions, because it really was pretty enlightening.
Yeah, I mean, we keep that up daily, every week. I mean, it's, it's, it's actually with our dossier or fleet software system and BSNA, it's something that I could email the city manager and get to you.
I think that answers a lot of these questions, showing exactly how old a lot of these pieces of equipment are, and beyond their useful life, the cost of maintenance and so on.
It's a great, it shows the vehicles, the equipment, it'll show the, the cost of them, it'll show its useful life, it'll show its actual life, and then it'll show its, you know, its replacement costs.
Citywide for all of it.
Citywide.
Yeah, that'd be, if you could do that again, I think that's a great thing. Maybe we need it every year to remind us of just how bad it is.
I can, I'll get that to the city manager tomorrow.
Reduced our fleets, in areas where we've reduced personnel, the police fleet is a lot smaller than it used to be. And when we had more officers, but a lot of the other areas, we still have to, you know, we're still caring for the same miles of road, we're still caring for the same miles of water and sewer lines, we still have to mow the same amount of cemeteries. So we, it doesn't reduce your equipment need, especially your heavy equipment and mowers and things like that, if the population goes down. So that's kind of, and when you, you know, you start to look at these numbers, it is pretty astounding what, you know, a heavy-duty type mower that they use in the cemeteries can cost you $20,000. And so it's, it's, when you start replacing that equipment, it adds up pretty quick.
And then the other thing we're trying to do, if you will, look at some of these purchases, we've mentioned trying to get multi-use vehicles. A lot of times, we have trucks that they're just designated for snow plowing, where we're not doing it anymore. We're buying the hook loader truck to where we can use it year-round. You know, plow trucks, you used to just park them and you'd only plow with them. But now we got hook loader systems where you can dump the salt body, hook up a chipper box, hook up different, you know, just a standard, you know, for, you know, yard waste and leave. So multipurpose, so that when they are becoming obsolete, they're becoming obsolete with a quarter, you know, 250,000 miles on them, not 80,000, and then you just rust it out. And then a recent snow plow truck purchase, we bought a wing plow, which is a neat thing. So it actually will serve the purpose of two trucks. It'll be the first time we've ever tried it. Obviously, we're only going to use it on the majors and state highways, because I don't want them trying to run it down local streets with, you know, a 10-foot-wide wing plow. So, but, so we're trying to be smarter in the way we do buy, you know. So, you know, the area had a $30,000 attachment versus a $180,000 truck, you know, as we have less people and less equipment. So we're trying to be more resourceful in how we buy, too.
Good evening. Well, I'm back again, as I am twice a year, to go over with you the proposed personnel complement changes for this year, the fiscal year 2019 budget. I'm brought back my normal little chart of additions, deletions, and reallocations. But before I get to that, there's one other item that I want to go over with you in tandem with that, because you will see it as part of the budget for next year. Probably the greatest percentage of my time in human resources is spent in the recruitment and hiring area. And in conversations that we have had as part of the management review team, we've noticed over the last number of years, increased difficulty for the city as far as recruiting and retaining higher-level positions within the city. We've had some difficulty recruiting at the department head level, at the division head level, and we were beginning to suspect that one of the situations we found ourselves in was that our salary ranges were no longer competitive with what was out there in the marketplace. So one of the things that we did as part of the management review team is wanted to take a look at that. We felt that some of the factors were the fact that from 2012 to fiscal year 2016, we were not giving our department head pay ranges any across-the-board increases, so our salary ranges remained rather stagnant over the years. We were having difficulty attracting qualified applicants. We were having difficulty having in-house people be interested in upward mobility, and that was putting a hindrance on any of our succession planning. So we thought, well, let's take a look and see if that really is the situation. And in January of 2018, we did our own survey of local municipalities, asking them to participate and give us salary range information for a lot of their department head level positions. And lo and behold, what we suspected was true. In reviewing the data that we found, we found that our starting salaries were a little off, but our top end were way off as far as being competitive out there in the market. So we took a look at a way to address that, that would help us in our staffing efforts, but also not break the budget. So a recommendation that we put forth as part of this year's budget is to take the non-union salary ranges and extend them out, you know, right now, they have six steps, okay? You have step one, and each year, on July 1st, you can move up a step and move up a step, until after six years, you're at the top of the salary range. We decided to go back and increase the number of steps, which is actually something we did back in 1999, when we had nine steps to the non-union pay ranges. So what we're proposing is dropping off step one of the salary range and extending it out actually four steps, so that we now can go back to having a nine-step, non-union salary range for our recruitment and our promotional efforts. Doing it in gradual steps like that does not cause any undue hardship to the budget. It's not like we're asking to take someone who's at step six of a salary range now and putting them all the way up into step nine. We would be doing it in yearly increments. And we took a look at what that cost impact would be. And for the 18 non-union employees that we have right now, implementing that new pay chart for next fiscal year would have a cost impact of $20,757. And the benefit that we get for that amount of money, I think, will go a long way in keeping key, strong department heads on staff for the city. They're the glue, and they're the drive that keeps the city going and helps us with all of these complicated issues and difficulties that we have to attend to. And we need to make sure that we pay appropriately for that as well. When you get your personnel complement for next year, we'll have, if you approve it, that expanded non-union salary range chart in it. And the reason I wanted to talk about that first, before I went over the normal chart that I present to you, is that some of the things that you'll see in the reallocation portion are reflective of implementing these new non-union salary ranges. Yes?
Nine steps?
Every July 1st, the non-union employees receive a step increase. So if they're at step six right now, and if they've been frozen at step six for quite a while, they'll have three more years of getting an increase.
So it'll take about nine years to go through the nine steps?
Yes. If they have been at step six, they have been getting a small stipend each year, but they've no longer been receiving step increases. If you were a non-union employee at step two or step three, you were still getting a step increase in July.
These are mandatory, or these optional step increases?
It's a normal increase procedure every year.
I got one more question. What's the average amount of time do the 18 people have now? I mean, so how many people are we looking at to get in those steps?
I would say most of them have been here for, I don't know, I don't think we've ever really averaged them. We have a couple new ones, and we have a couple that have been here for 20, 25 years, so.
Okay. I'll go find that out. Thank you.
I know that you, we use a lot of suffixes. Do we have a chart so that I don't have to keep always asking, like GF, NGF? I mean, I look at a lot of forms, and we have suffixes. And I'm like, okay, so I gotta ask what it means.
Each year, I prepare and give you copies of our personnel complement. It's a bound document that you probably got a copy of maybe in last September. And there's a chart in the front that tells you if it starts with a G, that's an hourly union employee, and A is the salaried union, M for management is the apseme union. If there's an N in front of it, it's for non-union, and then there are other ones for police and fire. And then if you looked inside the complement, it would give you an alphabetical listing of all of the positions with that code by it, and it will also give you by department all of the positions and what their pay grade is using that code. Personnel complement. The personnel complement. And you should be getting a new one for the next fiscal year, probably in August. You're welcome. All right. So you have your handout with the proposed personnel complement changes, and we've been very busy this year. You'll see, there's a lot of things going on here, and we might be jumping from page to page a little bit. But the first one here is the additions to staff. And we are recommending the addition of 13.35 full-time equivalent employees to the complement. The first one listed here is the code enforcement inspector, and this would be charged to the general fund at a total cost of $41,677. But what's happening with this position is it's going to be totally dedicated to rental inspections and non-owner occupied licenses. So it will be revenue generating, and that $41,677 should be more than paid for by the increased revenue for the city. The next one is the utilities collection coordinator. We have had collection coordinators in other areas of our finance department, but this one will be totally devoted to customer accounting or the water billing area. They will be working on collecting outstanding utility accounts and water lien chargebacks. And when needed, they will also be working as one of the counter employees in water billing. So they will be bringing in extra revenue as, as well for the city. I know you're aware of the agreement with Covenant Hospital for them to provide funding for two additional police officers, and those are the two that you see listed here. Another addition to staff is a deputy director within the Public Services Department. Public Services is the largest department that we have in the city. It has 26 part-time and 109 full-time employees, and it oversees engineering, streets, facilities, the garage, maintenance and service, cemeteries. We've decided Phil needs some assistance to, to help manage all of that, and so that will be a non-union position being added to the complement. We're going to be adding another engineering assistant in the engineering department. We have had a large increase in the number of permits that are being issued for water and sewer, for demos, for public utilities. We need someone to issue those permits and then follow up and make sure that the requirements have been met on those permits. They will also be assisting with reviewing traffic setups. We're going to be adding two laborer twos to our streets area to assist with roadwork, street sweeping, crack filling, and a variety of other tasks on our roads. We're going to be adding a fleet maintenance technician within the garage. This is a position that does normal routine and preventative maintenance on vehicles, tire changes, oil changes, fixing headlights, replacing wipers, air filters. This had been done by a temporary service employee, and we were paying quite a bit to pay that person, plus the markup fee that you pay for a temp agency. Since they were not our employee, they would come on board with us, maybe work for six, nine, or 12 months, get all that experience, and then leave us to go work for an auto repair company, because we couldn't offer them regular employment with the city. We're hoping now that this will save us on replacement and training costs by having one full-time dedicated technician, one within the garage. We're going to be adding one temporary laborer to City Hall. You may have noticed the last couple summers, there was a vast improvement to the grounds outside City Hall, and that was due to the work of a temp agency woman that we had, who was actually a schoolteacher. And she would work in her months off from June through August, and really did a good job with the City Hall grounds. She has since retired, and she will be joining us now May through November to make sure that we form a good impression for our citizens. We had a retirement at Wastewater in that we had a sewage plant maintenance person one retire, and you will see that position listed when we get to the deletions. We decided to upgrade that replacement to a sewage plant maintenance person two because of the additional variety of tasks and jobs that they could do out at the plant. At water treatment, we are adding a maintenance foreman. The current maintenance foreman there has been taking on additional projects, long-term planning, working with the asset management planning, where there wasn't sufficient time to handle all of the day-to-day repairs and work that needed to be done at water treatment. So we're going to be adding a maintenance foreman. And we're also going to be adding a plant operator at water treatment to assist with shift coverage at the plant. And the final addition listed here is in technical services, and I think this has been talked about previously, adding a GIS technician, water and sewer, to work with updating a lot of the asset management work into the GIS database. So we're adding 13.35 positions to the complement for a total cost of $583,584. On the next slide, though, you will see deletions to staff, and there are only two of them, but one is quite substantial. You'll see that we are recognizing the layoff of our 13 full-time firefighters that had been funded through the SAFER grant for a reduction in cost of $471,042. So all total, we are then deleting staff costs of 14 full-time equivalent for $513,000. So all total, we are then deleting staff costs of 14 full-time equivalent for $513,781. Comes close to offsetting those additions to staff.
The 13 firefighters that we laid off, do we need them to the fire department? Do we actually need them?
They were the ones that we lost the funding for.
I understand that. I mean, the reason why I'm asking is, I mean, how can we justify adding $583,000 more people, but yet we couldn't keep our firefighters? I don't know.
So there's a different funding source. If you look through those, the GF would be General Fund. So the General Fund positions that are added, one of the big requirements is how are you going to fund that through the General Fund? So the Code Inspector, John Stempel, is required to make sure that he's generating funds to cover that position. So doing more inspections, issuing more permits, so on. You look at the customer accounting position, that's not General Fund. The two patrol officers are in the General Fund, but they're not funded by tax dollars. So if you go down through each one, the total is the 583, but a big portion of that is not General Fund dollars. So you...
And you saying that that money's coming out of General Fund, the GF is General Fund's money. Everybody got some General Fund in these jobs. I guess we'll get maybe three or four of them. I guess you got a point.
But you look at the source of the funding too. And so, like I said, the patrol is General Fund, but that's contracted dollars and so on.
The Code Enforcement Inspector is an asterisk, and the police officers, those are 100% General Fund, but they are being reimbursed either through the Covenant Grant or through increased revenue. The other ones, you can see they're split between General Fund and non-General Fund, and the General Fund percentage is quite low. 35%, 23%, 20%.
Enterprise is going to pay for the sewage and the maintenance foreman and the plant operator?
Yes.
Okay. I'm just saying, when you're looking at this, you're like, well, what the hell going on here? I mean, you got...you should get rid of 13 firefighters, bitch, you adding money on this side now. I mean, you know, you guys doing this, and I'm going to take the weapon when I get back outside. And then, you know, so I might have to do a little bit too. So I just want to know.
Trust your math.
The firefighters, that maybe would have covered one firefighter?
Not even with benefit costs, no. So I'd like to go through the reclassifications and reallocations now. And the first one is a change to our collections person in Finance. We're going to be expanding her role to have her help other departments with their collections procedures and training staff on how to do that. So that should be even further increased revenue for the city. We're recommending that that pay grade be increased from a salaried union A28 to an A30 for a cost of $27,49. I mentioned earlier some changes to our non-union pay ranges. And some of them, when we got the survey results back, we found that there were some positions that were tremendously under what was the accepted and normal and average rate for municipalities of similar size to the city of Saginaw. And that was for our Police Chief, for our Public Services Director, and for our Water and Wastewater Treatment Director. And so you will see that they are also listed in these reallocations. We're recommending reallocating the Police Chief from a non-union 81 to an 83. And I just want to jump down so I can do all of those at the same time. The Director of Public Services, Phil Carwatt, we're taking from a non-union 81 to an 84. And Director of Water and Wastewater, Kim Mason, from an 81 to an 84. And those associated costs are listed there as well. One thing that we also changed is the Executive Assistant to the City Manager. When Debbie Powell held that position, she was also responsible for public relations. We always tend to look at vacant positions when they become available and make whatever changes are needed. And we took the position back to what it had been previously at one lower pay grade of an N57. So you'll see a slight decrease in that position because of a change in the public relations portion of it. That's a savings. Yes. Mr. Morales discussed, I believe, at the last Committee of the Whole, the position of Assistant City Manager and Human Resource Director for Dennis Jordan. That's being reclassified from an N81 to an 86. The Administrative Analyst in the Office of Management and Budget had been originally set up to be two-tiered. We have some labor foreman positions that have two tiers to them. They start out at an M54, and after a couple years, they go to an M56 after they've learned the job and can fully function in that position. This Administrative Analyst within the Office of Management and Budget is structured that same way. This would be for Brian Weiss, taking him from Administrative Analyst 1 to an Analyst 2. So his pay grade would be increasing from a 55 to a 57. Jumping down a little bit to wastewater, this is an awfully long title to what used to be called our Plant Engineer. Due to the additional asset management responsibilities, it's now going to be called the Water/Sewer Engineer and Asset Management Supervisor. They're going to be responsible for all asset management that takes place at both the water and wastewater treatment plants and our remote facilities. So we're increasing that pay grade from a 66 to a 68. And finally, a while back, I came to you with a reallocation we did for our Plant Electricians. We had some at water that were in one union and some at wastewater that were at another union. There was some disparities between those pay grades between the unions, and we were also falling short in the marketplace in being able to attract electricians. So it was approved that we reallocate some of those. We're doing the same thing with our mechanics. It's getting harder and harder to find in the skilled tradespeople that are welders and can work a lathe and do what we need to have happen to keep this aging equipment that we have up and running at water and wastewater. So we're recommending some reallocations for those positions as well. Lastly, we have a few title changes. We're going to be changing the Plant Maintenance Foreman at Water Treatment to Chief Maintenance Foreman, and that's because we're adding another Maintenance Foreman under that, and this will give better distinction between the two levels. And we're also changing the names of the mechanics in our garage to Fleet Management Technician. So this is a lot more than I usually bring to you, but I think if you look at the bottom line, you'll be pleasantly surprised at what the total impact is. You'll see on the summary of actions taken that our additions to staff total $583,584, but our deletions to staff are a savings of $513,781. The cost of the reallocations is $57,900. But I want to draw your attention to the chart off to the side where the total cost of all of those General Fund changes is $194,975, which is a little higher than what we normally bring. But I want you to look down to the next box where it says General Fund Funding. And I took that $194,975 and accounted for the monies that are going to be coming into the city. The two asterisks there, the one asterisk is the additional revenue coming in for the Code Enforcement Inspector, and the two asterisks is the reimbursement from Covenant Hospital for the two police officers. So actually, the cost to the city for the General Fund is $70,434. And because of the cost savings we have in these changes to the non-General Fund positions, you'll see that all of these changes are only going to account for an increase in total wages of $3,162.
Enforcement. So what are you saying is that we know we've been missing $41,000 worth of work in the city, and we know we can get those funds?
Enforcement for rent on landlords and generated far more than that. John, do you want to come up and brief the council on that?
Good evening. This year, and it wasn't just the Inspections Division that worked on this project, it was the GIS Department, the City Clerk's Office, as well as the Inspections Division. There's a lot of opportunity out there that we have been missing for a long time related to the rental registrations, the vacant property registrations, as well as just basic code enforcement, you know, obtaining permits and the like. When, like Mr. Carwatt, I've been here for a number of years, pushing 23 years now, and there was a whole roomful of people at City Hall, seven supervisors, you know. We just got a little space in the corner about this big. And the work isn't any different. In fact, the work is actually more, especially with increased development going on in our downtown or old towns, there's many more permits that are being issued, bigger projects that are more complicated that take the Code Inspectors away from doing that code enforcement work because they now have to focus on inspecting the permits, inspecting the new construction. Where before, when the development was lower, they could contribute by kind of doing both jobs at the same time. So there's a lot of opportunity out there, and it has worked well going after these and holding these owners accountable for complying with the ordinances. The other thing that was part of the ordinance changes was when folks come in to register their properties, they're also required to pay their property taxes. Before, that was not the case. They could buy a property at the auction, the tax sale, for 50 bucks, hold it for three years, never pay a dime in taxes. And it just, it was an endless cycle, which, you know, resulted in many properties being dilapidated. So does that answer your question, sir?
Yeah, I noticed an inspector wrote in my neighborhood last year.
I remember.
Last time I put on the roof, I didn't have a permit. And he waxed me pretty good. So I was going to make sure we equal with everybody with that, that's all.
Yes, sir.
Like a different, what's the word, game plan to an extent? I mean, I don't know if it's specific to this area, but before, the mindset, I mean, I'm sure residents would be happy with this mindset because it kind of corrects behavior and make money. But before you were working with the property owners and trying to correct, give them an opportunity to correct the issue, I mean, is that, do you think, I mean, that's like a different way of looking at things with this?
No, because we still do that. We still, Janet, I think you send at least three letters to a property owner before it moves to the enforcement piece. So it's not like we're just saying, hey, we got you, pay up. It's, you know, we say, please do this, please do this, please voluntarily comply with our rules. And if they don't, then, you know, we're forced to equal the playing field by taking that next step. People, over time, if you don't take that next step, they figure out that you're just bluffing. And we've done that in many areas, the income tax division. I used to hear people say, it's a voluntary tax. Why do I have to pay it? The city never does anything. But when you start picking people up and taking them to jail because they didn't pay their income tax, you know, all of a sudden it becomes real, and the rules are there for a reason.
Okay, thanks, sir.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. You said that the, okay, there's $471,000. The SAFER grant. I thought the SAFER grant was city dollars, I mean, was federal dollars. So why does it offset so much if these were, if this was a federally funded thing through the SAFER grant?
Someone else can correct me if I'm wrong, but it was money that was budgeted every year within the budget, and we no longer have that revenue coming in because of not receiving the grant going forward.
Okay, but I'm saying this. From the original plan, I thought SAFER grant was federal dollars. So if it's federal dollars, what does it got to do with the city? Let's explain to you.
That's kind of just the overview of that. Has a summary of, these are the additions, these are the deletions. One doesn't necessarily have anything to do with the other, but it is federal dollars coming in, so it is part of our budget. So what she's showing is the budget's going down by this much citywide, and the budget's going up this much citywide. But regardless of the funding she has here, it's in that total amount. But federal grant dollars are still considered city dollars, just like water enterprise funds or special revenue funds. They're all still in that total pool of about $130 million in the budget.
Our booing. A little cheer once in a while would have been okay. Well, no, I can't let that. Go ahead, Kim.
Staff for preparing the budget, Yolanda's office puts in a lot of hours to put everything together, and the department heads work on it. They start working in, I mean, they'll start working again in another six or seven months on this, the next year's budget. They put a lot of time and effort into it, and it's, it may be discouraging for a lot of the department heads because usually what they put in initially probably gets cut by about 30% when we start making those. So I thank them for doing that work and completing it on a timely basis. And then what Beth talked about with some of these changes, it is very important for the city. You notice that the, I think we are off on non-union. There's not, obviously, unions to look out for these individuals when it comes to pay. But also, I think in the 90s, everyone was put back at the same level for non-union department heads. Increasingly, it's become more and more difficult to hire management staff, particularly that deal with water and sewer, for a variety of reasons. You have a lot of liability there too, and now we see there's personal liability, which is why Phil Carwatt and Kim Mason would be the two department heads that are put up. They would be very hard to replace, so. And they're both, I believe Kim has a couple of different filtration and distribution licenses, and Phil has a distribution license. Those are things that we're required to have in the city, and we need those to keep up the projects that they're working on. So that retention angle goes to all the department heads that we have. I think they all do good work. And that retention is important to keep us on the track that we're going. But we also see from our hires in the department head level, the issues that we have there. I know Councilman Ball's talked about it a lot, but it shouldn't take us two and a half years to hire a finance director to be able to attract someone who's qualified. Saginaw is in a good financial position, so I don't think you could say, as in previous years, nobody wanted to work here. I don't think that's true. I think it's just the field of accounting and finance is pretty well-paying outside of municipal government and even within municipal government. And even within municipal government, I think we were off on that. So we weren't getting necessarily the applicants that I thought would do the best job for us. So I think that's, Beth's, thank Beth for doing that study and comparing us to other cities in Michigan. That was a lot of work for her to do that extra, so I thank her and Dennis for doing that as well. And again, congratulations to Yolanda. And she'll be getting started here in a couple months on the next one, so.
Well?
Motion to adjourn?
I don't need a motion. I don't need a motion. You're adjourned.